We're at the City Council Committee Meeting for Monday, June 17, 2024. We're going to start off with two consultations. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Ferrari.
Thank you, Council President, City Council Mayor. We'd like to start tonight with a review of the audit. We had John Tafelowski from Kuzak and Company, auditors who audited the City's Connected Financials for 2023, and we're going to have John come up and explain the audit and what he's done and how everything looks, and hopefully you guys can ask some questions as you go along. Okay? I'm going to turn it over to John. John?
I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to the mayor, the city council, and everybody who helped us out during the audit. We really appreciate everything they did to help us complete the audit. We have a great staff here, very well qualified, really good people, and really appreciate everything that they did for us. So our ultimate responsibility for the audit is to be able to issue an opinion on your financial statements as to whether they're materially stated and whether they're in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP. So our audit takes place in three main phases. The first is our pre-audit phase, which takes place in December. So during this time, what we do is we review our internal control processes. We test those internal control processes. We perform variance and budget analysis, review council meeting minutes, and complete our internal risk assessment procedures. The next is our audit field work phase. This takes place in mid-March. We use this information gathered to develop our audit procedures, our audit programs, test account balances to verify if they appear materially stated. The third is our reporting phase, where we review the financial statements prepared by your senior accountant and report on the final results. So the financial statements that you have in front of you are a 77-page document overall. It's comprised of several major parts. The first major part is going to be the Management's Discussion Analysis on pages 1 through 7. This is a required audit section of the financial statements. So what this does is it summarizes the operating results and other financial highlights of the year. If you're unfamiliar with the financial statements, this is an excellent read. Pages 8 through 10, that's your independent audit report, where we issue an opinion on your financial statements. It is important to note that your financial statements are on fund level, only fund and account group level only, exclusively non-current governmental asset account group. We are pleased to say that we have, once again, issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. As high as any appearance we can give you, consider it a clean report. We have no reports issued in the past. So pages 11 through 13, these are your governmental fund balance sheets and statements of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Approximated operating results for the year ended December 31, 2023. General fund balance was unchanged due to the ARPA loss revenue. Water fund had a surplus of $323,000. Sewer fund had a surplus of $136,000. Recreation fund had a surplus of $4,000. Special grants and revenue funds, surplus of $13,000. And your capital projects had a surplus of $26 million due to the proceeds from syrup bond issuance and van redemptions. So highlights of the 2023 general fund activity. These are all approximate figures. Prior year tax income collected fell below expectations by $772,000. Casino revenue exceeded expectations by $504,000. Property sales fell below expectations by $1.7 million. Sales tax revenue exceeded expectations by $2.3 million. Insurance recoveries, these exceeded expectations by $753,000. Don't use cannabis revenue for the year was $531,000 for new revenue source for 2023. Street opening permits, these fell below expectations, $718,000. And federal ARPA funds that were utilized, $8.9 million for the year, $6.5 million of which was used for the loss revenue calculation. Overall, we feel that management does a really good job of your reserves. General fund balance is $18.9 million for the year ended. $6.5 million of that is restricted funds, and the detail for these account balances is on pages 52 and 53 in those financial statements. Van borrowings increased by $5.7 million to fund capital projects. Your New York State EFC borrowings, $28 million, converted to long-term searing bond. There was an increase of $48 million in the city's net pension liability. This is for underfunded ERS and PFRS. Balance at year-end was a liability of $9.9 million for ERS and a liability of $42.9 million for PFRS. Total OEP liability, other post-employment benefits, this increased by $43 million to $294 million. These evaluations are due to GASP statement 68 and 75, which require the accrual pension assets and liabilities and the other post-employment benefits on actuarial evaluations. Custodial fund is required by GASP statement 4. This includes the property taxes, which are collected from other governments, not yet admitted. Pages 16 through 58 are their financials. These are the footnotes for your financial statements. If you're not comfortable with the face of the financial statements or you want more detail, as a significant account balances or material account balances on the face of the financial statements, the notes are a very good read overall. Pages 66 through 77, this is your federal single audit. Since the city expended more than $750,000 in federal funding, you are required to have what's called a federal single audit. Federal expenditures for the year were $29 million overall. So as part of this federal audit, what we're required to do is rotate your major programs every three years. Major programs for this year were the community development block grant, the home grant, and also the ARPA funds as well. Your ARPA funds are required to be obligated for expenditure by December 31, 2024, and must be expended by December 31, 2026. There are currently $31 million still remaining of your ARPA funds to be spent. From an overall accounting and control standpoint, we feel like your staff does a really great job, and a really great team. There are a lot of strong people. They were very helpful during the audit. If there is any questions at this point on the audit process, that was just a brief overview of the financial highlights. Any questions on the audit process or the audit in general, financial statements, I'd be happy to take them at this point.
Could you just go ahead about the liability? Like you talked about the liability, not a million liability increase.
Sure, for the underfunded ERS and PFRS. So those evaluations are, so ERS and PFRS are under GASP statement number 68. The state has an actuarial evaluation done, and what they do is they have to report to us whether we have, if they're in an asset situation or a liability situation for overfunding or underfunding. Both of those pension systems are underfunded, which essentially means that they have liability that is allocated on a prorated basis to each municipality that's part of that system. So in theory, as of 12/31/23, should those systems fail, in theory, the city would owe $9.9 million for ERS and $42.9 million for place of fire. We know that would never happen. There's safeguards in place, but GASP statement 68 does require that that is placed in the long-term debt fund as a liability. And that's the same with GASP statement 75 and the other post-employment benefits. That's liability as well as going on an actuarial basis. So the actuary provides a report that says, you know, this is your projected liability based on our inputs and outputs into this coverage at that given time. I know those numbers seem really massive, you know, and it's kind of scary to some of them. For lack of a better term, they can be considered future liabilities where they're not going to be funded, they cannot be funded, but ultimately, those are evaluations that have to be put onto your financial statements.
All right, thank you.
So a question, you said that part of the federal audit process that you have to rotate three major programs. What do you mean by that?
So your major programs are any programs that are over $750,000 or meet certain risk criteria. So if that program was audited in a previous year, it was over $750,000, we had findings, we didn't have to audit that program again. So every third year, so essentially like your lead grant. You spent more than $750,000 on your lead grant this year, but I audited that program last year without any material, there was no findings, no significant deficiencies. So I did not have to, once again, audit it this year as well. The ARPA program is so large that we consider it higher risk from our standpoint. Our internal risk assessment says this is a brand-new program, very high dollar amount. We're going to audit it every year, irregardless of what we can't do. So that's kind of from our side, what we're doing, our risk assessment of that program.
Okay.
So I had a question, and I imagine your report gets more detailed. Just wanted to confirm, you said pages 52 and 53, give that assessment of the balances. And I imagine that gets into how our rating of the city is outlined?
I'm sorry, your rating?
Or I think there's like a...
Like the bond rating? So the bond rating is discussed in the Management's Discussion Analysis. Details on the actual fund balance with all the different funds, that's going to be on pages 52 and 53. So you can see how much is restricted, what it's restricted for, if there's accomplices, details of all of those different balances.
You mentioned on the ARPA loss revenue, $8 million, and we only used $6 million. Does that mean we have $2 million available?
We used an angle 24 now.
Yeah, well, I was going to say there was even more than that. So it was, I think it was $11 million in total. But we used six, six and change this year, and then the rest is budgetary.
Anyone else?
I mean, you said the audit went very well. Thank you all for having me here tonight. And if there's any questions afterward, after you're done here, if anything, just give my contact information until you're done, and take care.
Thank you.
Okay, excuse me. We've been talking about this for a while and about doing the quarterly financial report so that we don't see a similar situation as we do last year when we get to the budget. We kind of have an idea of where we were financially and how things are going. So Mr. Ferrari is here today to just kind of go over where we are with our revenue. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you going to vote to adopt?
Oh, yeah, for the audit, yes.
Accept the audit, I think.
Accept the audit.
Yes, but let's just do that under government ops, because I usually do it in a committee. So let's do it there.
All right. You want me to go ahead, or you?
Yeah, we'll do that in government ops.
I'd like to present, Derek Gugamonto is going to present our first quarter details for you. Derek?
Thank you. So we're just going to review the first quarter report for fiscal year 2024. I'd like to start with the general fund. Start off on a positive note. The City's Connected did increase its rating from A to A+ after completion of the official statement and interview with our S and P experts. From an operational standpoint, based on the original adopted budget through March 2024, the city has attained 40% of its projected general fund revenue and expended 22% of its projected general fund expenditures. Through the same period of 2023, the city had attained 41% of its projected revenue and expended 23% of its projected expenditures. Some of the budget concerns for the general fund are uncertainties of health insurance costs. There's an 11% increase from 2023 to 2024. This is in the same period from January through March. Vehicle repair budget has increased by 68% compared to 2023. Tipping fees increased by 107% compared to 2023. The waste recycling per diem salary increased by 28%. Public safety overtime costs, respectively, the PD has increased by 5% compared to 2023. And again, this is from January through March of 2024. The fire department increased by 16% during the same time period. There is only one meeting contract which has not been settled, which is on tonight's agenda, PBA for 2024, the golf fund. From an operational standpoint, based on the original adopted budget through March 24, the city has attained 2% of its projected golf fund revenue and expended 7% of its projected golf fund expenditures. Through the same period, 2023...
I'm sorry, did you say 2 and 7?
Correct, correct. 2% for revenue, 7% for the expenditures for 2024. Compared to 2023, the city attained 2% projected revenue and expended 20% of its projected revenue, excuse me, projected expenditures. The expenditures for 2023 are due to higher type capital reserves, expenditures compared to the same period of 2024. The length of the season will definitely influence the financial outcome of the golf fund. Right as of now, there are no budget concerns for 2024. The water fund, from an operational standpoint, activities in the water fund are closely tracking those of 2023, raising no budget concerns at the present time. Based on the original adopted budget through March 2024, the city has obtained 58% of its projected revenue and expended 20% of projected expenditures. Through the same period of 2023, the city has attained 67% of its projected revenue and expended 19% of its projected expenditures. The revenues are down in 2024 due to the timing of issuing NISC unit water bill, which is approximately $648,000. The expenses are up in 2024 due to early use of water repair line, approximately $455,000 in 2024. The sewer fund, from an operational standpoint, based on the operational adopted budget through March 2024, the city has attained 63% of its projected sewer fund revenue and expended 16% of its projected sewer fund expenditures. Through the same time period of 2023, the city has attained 62% of its projected revenue and expended 18% of its projected expenditures. Use of type capital reserves is much higher at this point in 2024 than the same period of 2023 by approximately $66,000. So the finance department will continue to monitor the numbers and report to City Council on a quarterly basis. Are there any questions at this point?
Thank you for the breakdown. A little bit of clarification, you said the vehicle repair increased. Are you able to differentiate between the routine maintenance and then just accidents?
Vehicle repair, parts, and bringing it to a garage shop to get the repair. I think most of that is due to inflation, the parts, supply and demand. So definitely seeing that as a result.
So just you're, you're suggesting that's probably just because the increase of parts is not necessarily more vehicles are breaking out, like there's an increase of things like that?
Could be potentially both of aging fleet and, you know, just supply and demand. As you know, inflation with the cost of repair, you know, getting those parts.
You also said there was 11% increase for our healthcare costs?
Yeah, yes. Well, that's compared to 2023. It's going up. We showed you guys in the past, and the council wanted to cut. It was approximately $1 million at one point, but it's just, you know, the way the market is at this point. I think I don't know if FAM can see more towards the end.
On the health side, during the COVID period from 2020 to 2023, actually, because of the COVID outbreak, our fees for health had steadied and actually gone down. But as 2023 emerged, especially at the last quarter, the last half, you know, people started going back to the doctors. We had a lot more babies, and sorry to say, we had a lot more people getting sicker than, you know, than we wished to. In 2024, we saw that last quarter of 2023 move increasing, as you can see, at 11% more. More people are going to the doctors, more people are getting treatments, and more people are getting the work done. So the price of, the price has gone up, but, you know, I always like to say that because we have such a great health benefit here at Connected, you know, we're proud that our workers are covered so well. So it's, it's to give, it costs more money, but, you know, we're giving a really good product to our employees.
So we have a 2023 completed year, and not this year at this point in time, what areas are lying expenses that we should be concerned of that we may...
I think I mentioned a bunch of them. I think those are definitely, you know, ones you have to look out for. You could do another...
Sorry? Top three?
Top three. Health insurance is definitely one of them. You know, with the overtime costs, possibly PB and PD and fire department, you know, the council did cut this past bunch of years. You know, this first quarter is really hard to tell at this point. We'll have a better idea in the second, third quarter where we're going to sit. So I think about a month or so, we'll have another discussion for a second quarter, more updated numbers.
Thanks.
In terms of the vehicle repairs, 68% increase, do you think that that might have been lessened had we been able to vote in our last budget about going to the, going internal with our vehicle repairs, which I think was what you guys had presented to us in the budget but was rejected by the council?
I think, I thought that we pushed that through a fiber ball correctly.
Oh, it went through? Yes. Oh, I thought we... The guy? It went through.
I think, I think it took a while.
So you're hiring more work on in our group now too.
Okay, but we did keep that guy on overnight. Okay.
So that's also an increase, but we're also thinking we'll work on those.
Because I thought you said something about sending the vehicles out, just now when you were talking to Mr. Harley.
I was asking, is it due to the increase of cost of price of parts?
We do both. Well, we do both, Ms. Patrick. Okay. But to her point, I thought that was going to kind of, that was supposed to cut our costs as opposed to, but now doesn't seem like it necessarily.
Yeah, I think, like I said, it took a while to get someone in that position. So I don't think we're really seeing the fruits of the labor yet. Maybe in the second, third quarter, we'll actually see, you know, that decrease.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I know, kind of referencing our last budget cycle, I know a point of contention or just an area of a lot of discussion was around the overtime budget related to the police department and fire department. I don't know if it's related, but I do see both Chief Clifford and Chief Lee up here. And I don't know if I could, are available, but I would love to hear from their respect if there's been any alteration in their responses to public safety, which was a comment or a series of comments I've heard frequently from the community. I know, as you mentioned, this is just the first quarter, but it's a question that I will be asking throughout the year, just has there been any administered or altered responses due to the, or due to the way we budgeted overtime?
I'm not sure if the chiefs are ready to present at this time for that, and maybe it'll come in the next committee cycle to discuss that further with you.
Okay. Did you hear the question? Did you hear the comment?
I can speak in general.
Come on. I know your finger's on the pulse of this all the time. I know your finger's on the pulse of this all the time.
So you want to understand the question?
So just to repeat myself, throughout my conversations, I've heard, and also it was a comment that was consistently repeated, that any adjustments that were made to the recommended budget lines for overtime would have a negative effect to your ability to respond to events throughout the community. So my question is, have you had to alter your response due to the, due to what money was allocated to overtime?
No, not at this point. We have minimums tapping with 20. We put 20 on the street every day. We answer every call that comes in like normal, and the money is there now to pay for all the overtime. What happens in the third and fourth quarters, yet to be seen. That's why I was so passionate and adamant for that figure that we presented. As of the first quarter, the amounts that we were looking at, we were right on target for that amount that we requested. Now, if we remain at that, we'll see. We're definitely not going the other way.
Similar response. I think it's fair to say that the first quarter for the police department has always been least expensive for us. Seems like weather is usually cooperative from the first of the year until, you know, April, May. And we do a lot less proactively, more responsive. So we really didn't, you know, we really didn't do much different than we normally do. But we do expect that with the summer months upon us, we have more, that we'll be busier, we'll be putting more assets out there as certain holidays come around, like 4th of July. So we will expect it to be probably a higher percentage than the first quarter for our overtime spending. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll see you for the second quarter.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, no, I just opened your glasses around. Oh, mayor?
The, just the, the, I'm trying to be polite with my word choice. Last year's budget process was somewhat of a debacle, so trying to avoid that, this type of information has always been provided to the council. We had generally made public comments at the adoption of the budget that we would go back and look to change the code in the charter, where today it reads that the mayor submits it by October 1st, the council adopts it by November 1st. There were some opinions granted that there were no impact or effect of not adopting a budget. I've made some staff adjustments to reflect that prior opinion, but thought the council was in the mindset to put something on the ballot to clear that up so that if a budget is not adopted by November 1st, you adopt either the mayor's proposed budget, last year's budget, some contingency budget, but to take the ambiguity out of the whole process. And that, you know, waited for that, it's the action of the council. We are coming up to a point where the timelines to put forward resolutions that would go on the ballot for this November, there's still time where we can do that, but I would assume the council's going to act on that in some fashion.
We can pick up the discussion at the next committee meeting. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, my only response to that would be, I would disagree in that, and I would categorize that as a debacle. I think it offered a lot of areas of improvement and a lot of learning opportunities for the council. I would agree with that, if we allowed it collectively to repeat again in our 2024 or 2025 conversations. But I definitely agree, Mr. Mayor, I think cleaning up some of those lesser cleared areas, specifically with regards to whether a budget is adopted, I definitely can agree that having more finer language to alleviate our interpretations only helps ensure that a budget is passed in time and manner for the city.
And that's one of the reasons I was hoping, I was asking that we had to do this process so that we're, once we get to the, where we have to actually look at the overall budget, we will have had discussions throughout and have a better idea of where we were so we won't have the back and forth and long, elongated, prolonged budget process that we had last year. So we can put that forward to have discussion at the next committee meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd like to call the water government operation. We have two items on the agenda.
Do you actually do the audit?
And, well, I will put three items on the agenda. So first item, we will go to accept the audit.
So... Second.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
Our next agenda item is going to be Dr. Kevin Tolden, our other clinical psychologist, and his chief manager.
Good evening. So working with the police department, our department has been in the process of establishing our own peer support team. As a matter of fact, we're joining the police department with their team. We're doing a fantastic job, and we're modeling our team after theirs, and we'll be working closely with them. Part of our peer support team is bringing on a clinical psychologist, and we are asking to approve a contract with Dr. Kelly Tolden, who's the same psychologist at the police department. Her contract calls for a $1,400 retainer fee every month. We will be modifying our original proposal of a year contract to six months, and there was some questions that the council president had asked that I have answered. So the background of our, the reason why we want our peer support team is because of the increase in mental health challenges that first responders are facing. And in the legislative request, I listed some of those. They're actually pretty troubling, to the point where we just dealt with two issues about 10 days ago of people that really needed some intervention. So due to the work our people do and the stress that comes with that, and the amount of time that our people are working, we're seeing more and more challenges. So it is extremely important... So it is extremely important that we have a team, and with the team, we need the clinical psychologists. So that's why I'm here to ask for the approval of the contract.
Chief, the compensation on section three, page, section three, $1,400 retainer, and then add to exceed $1,000. For additional service, so that's like four hours. Is that enough?
So what?
Of the $1,400?
So $1,400 is her retainer and all the services she'll provide. You see that on exhibit A. That additional $250 an hour, that would be in the event of some acute event. And I don't want to get specific, but if something happened and she was called in because of the sheer severity of that, that would be what she would be charging for that event. It wouldn't be for one-on-one. For one-on-one sessions, she'd be charging, she'd be invoicing the insurance. So this would be in the event of something happened. I don't want to be specific.
So I think what we're seeing in society right now is that there's a renewal of the social contract for institutions, including school districts, first responders, things like that nature. And I think that this is definitely in line with that. That's probably a contract that wasn't necessarily negotiated. We just had to respond to it because there's a different level of need here. So I think that that's an important step to take, a proactive step to take. It's something that we probably unfortunately will likely be utilizing one way or another. So I appreciate that. I feel and full support of that.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Just a comment. Do we have the same PSA for the police department? Do we have the same PSA for the police department?
I'm not sure it's exactly, conceptually, it's the same.
It's the police department, it's 2,000 overall, and then 225 for incidents. I just want to make sure that we have an up-to-date contract.
We do, okay.
For that, but that's the difference there. So it was modeled, as the chief said, off of the police department. My, I just wanted to ask, chief, so are we going to be the state in that we have in our information since June 1st? So we're going to be changing that to July 1st?
July 1st, definitely. And I'll speak with court counsel tomorrow about making it a six-month as opposed to a year?
Right, so to keep it in line with how we do our, our project, and then we do it again at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
Well, at the end of the year, or at the beginning of the year.
And court counsel wanted one phrase in the resolution, so we'll make sure that gets in there also.
Oh, just regarding legislative request?
Sorry?
That was just regarding the legislative request. We'll put together the final contract.
Mr. Toro?
Thank you. How, chief, so you said, you said something about you'd be working with the team. Who else is on the team? Do you have any?
Well, right now, we're putting together our team, working with Dr. Tobin. And just to be fully transparent, Dr. Tobin's been working with us probably the last two months and has not been compensated, nor is she asking to be compensated. I just state that to show you the character of Dr. Tobin. She is not in this for the money. Like I said to her today, you're not building a mansion anywhere. She's in it because she believes that, and she does wonderful work. She's already counseled a couple of our people.
Sure.
So we'll be starting in July. What was your question?
Oh, who, what other type of professional staff or whatever you would put on a team to help?
So some other departments have modeled their team through seniority, you know, taking into consideration what the contract states. Here, we're doing it basically on a volunteer basis. Our people will not be compensated. There are people that are drawn to this, and they'll be vetted by Dr. Tobin and those members of the Schenectady Police Department team to make sure that they're good. So we don't have names to give you at this point?
No, I don't.
But we'll have that soon. We're in the process.
Very nice, chief.
So is Dr. Tobin, is this a private practice or is she, does she have a group practice? And the reason I'm asking that is because if for some reason she's on vacation, she's, she's not feeling well, whatever, is there someone that, when help is needed, that there's still someone that is available to the members?
She's private practice, but she works closely with the police department's peer support team. So they're involved, they work as a group. So if she was not available, there'd be people from the police department's team. And not everybody that has an issue goes to Dr. Tobin. The whole concept of peer support is to talk to a peer, to work with a peer. And what we like about it, I like to say it was my idea, was it Chief Clifford's, that there could be times where a member of the police department would feel more comfortable speaking to someone outside the police department, be a firefighter, and vice versa. So I did like that concept. Whole idea is getting people to help.
Absolutely necessary, yes. Thank you.
Let's hope they're in motion.
So second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, the next item on our agenda is going to be PVA, we bring up the agreements, Mayor McCarty.
Okay, just to interject, that we recommend that this conversation happen in an executive session because it deals with collective negotiations.
Even though it's like a signed document that's been made public?
It may be, you know, how did, how did they get to this particular place?
It would depend on the question you asked.
Yeah, that is a question I have. How do they get to this particularly?
This document, so.
Executive session?
Yes.
So we're going to executive session?
No, we're going to recess.
All going to recess? So we're going to recess of government operations, and then we'll bring them back and move on to executive session.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we recessed government operations.
Also.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Call to order the finance committee and the force site, and this grant award law enforcement technology.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first one up is the BTEC, which is law enforcement technology grant. The New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services has awarded the city's Schenectady Police Department $1,569,494 to purchase hardware and software that supports the department's technology needs, and there are no mention of funds required. Any questions about that one?
Questions?
It's Anthony.
Go ahead, please. What, what type of technology need? Are they specific parameters they attach to that? Do you have something in mind?
I don't have the specifics per se, but perhaps information technology, whether it's regarding body cameras or inert videos, or laptops and computers. So that's sort of the generic category, by nature.
And if you had more specific, I thought there was a specific focus on this application, chief.
For this, for this grant, we had actually designate what our area of interest was. So like the lieutenant mentioned, we put in there for some surveillance cameras, laptop computers, and we also put in for license plate readers, for drones, to expand our fiber network up, you know, through some parts of the city, and video management software for all the cameras that we have throughout the city. So, so, so that's, that's, that's what we are awarded the funds for. The next step after accepting the grant would be to actually do the homework on the site, which vendor we will go with for each category.
Chief, you.
Thank you. So, so you said drones, in addition to the other program that we have, with the two drones, I think the other one is. And this would be, these would be additional?
Nope. This is what we've already, you've already approved, which is through BRINK. We have funding down and paid for that with the contract.
Chief, you mentioned a list item here. Are you planning to operate the server at the same time, or are you going to use iCloud?
We're going to use iCloud.
Okay. Any other questions? Say now, may I have a motion to move this item?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Which other?
Yes, so acting in to give here, the city of Schenectady Police Department has received grant funding under the gun-involved violence elimination, which again is the grid partnership for the fiscal year of 2014, 2015. The award is granted by New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. The grant application is a partnership between Schenectady Police Department, the Schenectady District Attorney's Office, Schenectady County Probation Department, and the Schenectady County Sheriffs. The total grant reward for all of the entities is $1,207,73. With the Schenectady Police Department receiving $513,495.
Question on this? Go ahead, please.
So is all of ours going to, so this is the budget here, right? You've given us the budget, how's it been sped down?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying now, may I have a motion to move this item?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other business for finance? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Health and Recreation to order. We have one item on the agenda. It should be a discussion of the new Central Park swimming pool, just to hear a little bit more about fees, hours, security, and any other issues that folks had wanted to discuss regarding the pool. So I just wanted to open that discussion up. I didn't know if we had already a fee structure or had started to consider that. The pool looks fabulous. I don't know if anyone else has gone up to see it. It's going to open later this week. Obviously, you know, we want to make sure that it stays as beautiful as it is currently. So to me, that brings up some security issues. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about what might be planned for these items and whether anybody else had some other items to discuss.
Are there fees, fees collected at this time?
No.
No. Have we considered the possibility of attaching fees to non-residents?
It's been informal discussion, and some of the adjoining communities have more restricted access to their facilities, some charged fees. The city has not done it, and some of us were approaching it, staffing level more of an open mind to new facility. It really looks very impressive. The weather is also going to be slightly warmer than we'd probably like, so the utilization in the first days is going to pass some of the limits to handle it. And then we'll just see how it goes from that in terms of the actual hours and staffing. Some of the fees, other access issues, they're still brought in with the city council, and not only for the Central Park pool, but the rest of the pools in the city or some of the other facilities that we offer.
Who's next?
Yeah, I was going to say, it does look beautiful, and I think that we're proud of this project. I would say sustainability of the project is going to be really key. So I guess, you know, what would be ideal for me, and I'm saying this without, you know, really any information to support it at this time to the major square, there is going to be a level, kind of seeing how things are going and then being responsive to what we see. But I, you know, my initial thought would be not to charge residents of the city, but people who don't live here, who are coming here to, you know, to the pool, there'd be some small fee there. That's probably not, and I know that happens in other municipalities. The only thought then would be, I know it costs the city something to enforce those fees and like, oh, like, so I'll just, you know, look at that cost benefit piece there, but that's what I would be comfortable with.
Ms. Corfield? So do we, has the parks probably come up with anything that they've even considering what those fees might be and who would be charged? Is one of my questions. And the other part, is there signage that, you know, rules of the pool, essentially? Is that all in place for this weekend?
I hope so.
You don't know?
I haven't been up to look at it. They tell me the signage is on. And currently, we don't charge anything, Mr. Farley's point, there is a cost in terms of collecting it. Some of our neighboring communities are far more restrictive in terms of access to their facilities.
And so we'll consider what's, what's reasonable for us to do. But I have to agree that to charge residents, I don't, yeah, people can, you know, because people are really looking forward to it, and they're not looking forward to like being stopped at the gate for a dollar, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah, I actually also would support not charging residents. I just wasn't sure if we were going to have a non-resident, a non-resident fee, but I like the idea of, you know, opening and seeing how things go. In terms of staffing, are we all set with the lifeguards and all that?
We will be by the time we open.
Okay. Okay, and then, Mr. Toro, this.
So residents, absolutely. Children, free. No charge. How do they prove they're a resident? Folks don't have a license, and maybe they don't have a, an ID. We're looking for the, for the youth to provide a student ID to get in, because they might have one from school. So what happens Saturday, the gates open and, well, it's up to the, yeah.
We have generally used student IDs from the school district in past summers for access to Central Park pool and the other facilities. Assume that that's going to continue. So the past has had a recreation ID that was used for the tennis courts, the golf course, and other facilities. That had shifted so that even though there's fee structures on the books for the tennis courts, those are not collected. The golf course setup, there is a fee structure that is 100% enforced. That becomes a self-sustaining entity.
We used to get a photo at the place in Central Park where the Alamo. We used to be able to get a resident photo there for the golf course and other things that we were participating in city. So say, you know, a young child shows up with their mom, and their mom doesn't have anything this weekend. Can they fill in a Niagara Mobock bill? I'm just thinking, sometimes you bring that to, to the golf course to prove you're a resident, you know, a bill. So I just, you know, want to make sure everyone that's entitled to get in there to swim this weekend, drink again, to swim, so.
Well, but this weekend, we're not asking anybody for anything, right? Is that correct?
So we're not making a decision?
Steve, having said that, Boys and Girls Club is going to use the same procedures that they used last year at Central Park, where they still have to validate the number of people who are actually in the pool area because that dictates how many lifeguards we have to have on duty. And so they have collected the student ID or some accounting procedure as people come into the facility, and that will still be used just as it was in prior years. But we're not looking to restrict anybody in terms of their access, other than maybe a quantity issue. We would limit people because the capacity has been exceeded to match with lifeguards.
Makes sense.
Mr. Williams?
But I'd also like to comment, so to Ms. Dettoro's point, like of how do you manage that fee structure and the collection of it? I don't know if I agree, well, I don't agree with having. He doesn't agree either. I actually love the quote. I'm going to give my train of thought with the fee structures. Excuse me. So with the, with the fee structures, wow.
My fault. I told the pool, I'm their best friend.
If someone else has a question, we'll do that.
Maybe look back, maybe look back to, but Mr. Moody, very.
Yeah, the hours of operation, currently, the hours for the pools that we have.
In the contract, it went from 12:30 to 6:30.
12:30 to 6:30.
They do some swimming facilities in the morning before that. So wouldn't be, wouldn't be open on a restricted basis.
Central Park. Are we talking to Central Park?
Yes.
I think he's ready.
Yes, oh, sorry. One second, Mr. Williams. One second, Mr. Williams.
So, 12:30 to 6:30 for the current pool that we have, so we're not looking to have the same time slot for the Central Park Pool. We're looking more of early morning.
No, those are the public hours. There's some swim lessons that they give scheduled before the, against the general public.
In terms of security, we're talking about cameras and enforcement security. Is that all will be available?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Williams, are you?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I'd say I wanted to also just have a reminder, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, the emphasis with using a considerable amount of dollar to create a new resource was to help with the exploding maintenance fees to where it currently was, in effect.
Correct. Say it again?
Where the Central Park Pool currently was, it was just a difficult resource to manage, just due to the aging filtration system and among other issues, with it being closely near the, some of the animals that live around there. So, we wanted to re-move in, should help with controlling some of those maintenance and preventative maintenance costs in theory.
To some degree, we basically had no filtration system in the original pool. It was refilled every day. It's our ability to generate very large quantities of high-quality water at a very low price. So, some of that will be reduced, but this pool, by its nature, where you're recirculating the water, you do have filtration systems, better controls, there will be more of a maintenance issue in terms of people monitoring the systems, and again, there will be some upkeep on those systems to maintain the high quality of water and the overall character of the facility.
I think one thing I just want to add, just from going up there a few times this past week, remember that part of the project also had to do with the lighting and the roadway and parking access. It looks like there's about 36 additional parking spots. I was trying to count them as I was walking, so I didn't get the exact number, but the lighting is going to really, I just feel very significantly increase some safety at nighttime in that part of the, that, I mean, this is just me anecdotally saying, but I mean, it looks really great, so I encourage folks to go up there and check that out. But I just, it's, it's world-class, and there's no doubt when you see it, and so I just really am hoping that whatever we can do security-wise will, you know, help keep the buildings, the bathhouses, just fabulous looking. I won't be here tomorrow, I mean, everyone knows that there is a, it's tomorrow morning, I believe, is the ribbon cutting, so I hope that folks can get up there for that as well. So, Mr. Williams?
So, I'd say two points. One, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind speaking, I've heard myself, I imagine, it's the same for the council members, people have walked up, definitely lauded at the new facility that's going to be there, and like, that's all in the parking there. So, I know this is the first phase of the reconfiguration of the park, but then, second, I wanted to just point out, I know there have been ongoing conversations now about security. I think part of it is also challenging the community. There are oftentimes comments of this, well, we can't have nice things, and I want to ensure that there's also an equal responsibility placed on our community residents of, we can continue to make these investments, not only in our renovations of properties throughout the building, but also making sure that the city is or remains economically viable, but if we are chasing ourselves with having additional costs such as vandalism, that makes it difficult to contain these types of efforts. So, I know that there are preventative ways to go about that, i.e. surveillance cameras, and also with maybe increased police patrols throughout the area, but I want to ensure to Mr. Farley's point, let's see how it is and then respond, rather than putting in place some safeguards that might not necessarily be needed.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what the mayor was indicating in his opening remarks, that that would be what we would be trying to do. So, I appreciate Mr. Carley and Mr. Williams following up on that. Ms. Toro?
And I'd like to, up to you, of course, your committee, bring it back in two weeks and think about how, you know, my biggest concern is, is mom or dad can't bring me. Grandma's from out of town, and now she, you know, she, so it's up to the council, you know, to work on, to decide on how we're going to move forward with a fee structure and things like that.
Actually, the fee structure part of it should really come out of its administrative function, so they, it's like with the golf course, they, we don't create the fees, they come to us, they create the fees, and then we say, you know, yes or no. So, really, it would be the Parks Department, we don't really have the capacity to do that. It would really need to be the folks who work here on a, you know, daily basis, and, you know, obviously, we can provide suggestions, but creating the fees and all of that is something that would, is administrative function, and how it's done with all the other parts, with the lifeguards, with all of that.
Right. Other question?
The end result was solely the prerogative of the City Council. So, you know, one example for this swimming pool is it is now designed for competitive swimming events.
Yeah.
Those type of things may increase our staffing costs or monitoring it. So, do you want to have those free for city students? Would there be a fee for any group that's coming in doing a competitive swimming event? Do we only charge people outside of the city? So, there are things there, again, in terms of a policy decision, solely the prerogative of the council.
The policy, yes, but like, the fees, I don't know how we would, you know, or even how to, how to, like, do, like, with the Boys and Girls Club, they came up with the process of how people show ID and how to do, and get in, so, because we hired them to do that, so. I would think, I don't know, there's, I know there's not a Parks Director right now, but I'm assuming there's other staff that would still be able to, you know, provide us with some guidance on where we start with this.
I think that's a good suggestion, especially when we start talking about tournaments and what will happen, because again, it's definitely set up for that as well, so.
But that would be outstanding if we, if we could have tournaments. I'd go, wouldn't be a deal, wouldn't it?
So, can we ask that we get a recommendation?
Sure.
Around some of these policies, just like tennis, although it's not being enforced.
But it will be.
I think you all know how I feel about tennis fees, so, yeah, I think that, and the same with the golf, I mean, we do get that presented to us for discussion and approval, so is that something that we can do? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Carley?
Just what a good problem to have, that we have in this beautiful asset in the middle of our city that's going to bring people, to see how amazing our city is, so I'll just say it's good, it's a good problem to have, and I look forward to working with the council to help figure it out, it's good stuff.
I agree. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before Health and Recreation? Okay, I have to look for a motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Order of City Development and Planning. We have 14 items on the agenda. The first item is to issue the issuance of Revocal Permit Number 685 to Social Hospitality Group. Mr. Wallen?
Pardon, I left my packet on my desk, so I'm just going to go through from memory on all of these. So, the 685 social on state, that was a permit that was brought to you previously about two sessions ago, however, there were some discrepancies between the applicant, the insurance, and the property owner. So, we were working with the property owner on making sure that all, what's that?
The.
No, I'm aware of it, just wanted to. And so, now the applicant is the owner, and the names are similar, as what's going to be on the insurance, which was the issue, so we should be okay with the issuance of this permit now.
Are there any questions?
I'll move this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, the award-winning contract for the Steymonds Lake Wall Restoration.
Yep, this was a project that is an ARPA-funded project as well as a Sam Graham-funded project. It is for the restoration of the historic wall at Steymonds Park. The project was scoped uniquely where the city will be purchasing and providing the materials, and the contract is essentially for labor only. So, the idea is this, the company, Jawan Construction, out of New York City, they will be coming up and performing essentially masonry-only work to re-point, modify the wall, repair the wall, and install precast concrete caps. The city will purchase the precast concrete caps, and then the needed mortar and grout for the, for the project. We did meet with them on site, we did call five references, if you weren't familiar with them, and they seemed like they had their act together, they have work for other state agencies, they are working in Albany right now, it's a small family-owned company, they are an MBE company, and they're looking forward to doing work in the city. We actually took them to a couple areas to look at other projects in the city, because to have masons is something that is a skill that we were, we're looking for, for this kind of stuff. So, we're comfortable awarding it, the price was competitive, and we'll see.
And this money is already in the ARPA line for this project?
Mr. Wallen, can you just tell us a little bit about the timeline for this work?
Well, the timeline, they are ready to go because they're labor-only, so what we're doing right now is I'm working with Sarah in purchasing on the caps. What we were concerned about was the cost. We didn't want to order 420 caps, and then this number come in out of budget, and then we have caps and no labor. So, we wanted to try to get it, so we have this number. We already had quotes from a local company that specializes in precast, and we don't need 420 caps tomorrow, we just need them to start making the caps. So, Sarah's already contacted their person earlier last, later last week about getting into the caps, and then the other materials are common shell materials, so right now we're just waiting on the caps. But I don't have a schedule, we're open fall, I don't think this is a project you want to do in the dead of the summer, because if, you know, you're exposed, you're out, and I don't, I don't think, you know, you want to do something worth it 100. But if we can get some of the caps on, we're going to store the caps right next to Cal and Anne's yard of their, in the Steymonds, and then just start picking away and working forward. They anticipate once they start, it's going to be around probably, I think, a six-week project form.
Okay. Second?
Any other questions? Up and say a motion?
So.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, award-winning, award-winning contract for the North Ferry Street Pump Station exterior.
So, this is another ARPA-funded project, so as you're aware, we have a new North Ferry Pump Station that has put the existing, or the previous North Ferry Pump Station as essentially an abandoned city facility. The building is historically significant, and there was money approved to make sure that it does not get into a state of disrepair. The building is okay presently, but it's not great, so what the funding for this building is essentially seal the envelope. We're going to be doing the windows, similar to what we did at City Hall, removing the windows, restoring the windows, replacing any rock, re-glazing the glass, putting them back. We're going to be replacing the roof. The reason for the roof is that the roof right now has over a dozen penetrations for various vents and systems to come through, because it was a pump house, they have the vent. We're going to remove all of those vents, fill in where we can with concrete, steel, and masonry, and then do one flat roof with no penetrations, so that will really seal the roof off a lot better, go to the parapet. We're going to remove all of the stucco from the building, because if you were to look at the building, the building is a series of patchwork, because stucco was put on in various years, so we're going to remove all of the stucco down to the masonry block, and then redo the stucco, paint the building, so it'll look from the outside like a preserved building. The inside is a different story, but from the outside, it'll be weather-tight and preserved. And I know that the Stockade Association is working on lining up funding to try to address the interior of the building, but this money is for the exterior of the building.
Have we already done some work on this and started this process anywhere along the exterior?
No. Not to my knowledge, Paul might have years ago, but to my knowledge, no, it's just, it's there, it's just a building. And once again, is one of the tricky situations that we're trying to work with Stockade is, the reason that we built a new building, or one of the many reasons was, is that that building was determined to not be cost-effective to flood, because it is in the flood plain, so we built a new building that is flood-resistant. So, this is fine, and I know that we haven't had any issues there, but making significant investments into the building will be a complex subject going forward, because that is why we abandoned the building.
Any, any questions? All right, I'll say a motion.
So.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the fourth item is City Council to assume role of seeker of the agency for the Mohawk Harbor.
And I have a quick, I'm trying to make a brief just presentation to just show you where we are with this, because it's part of the process.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, so, I don't know how many of you are aware of this project, I'm sure you're all aware of it in some part of you, but it is a rather older project that was done pre-COVID, and it is something that we have been pushing along slow and steadily since then, due to all the development really at Mohawk Harbor. So, just to go through, I'll be quicker than this, but we're gonna, I'm presenting it here, I'm hoping to catch some publicity from possibly the paper, just to get it out there, what we're doing. We're going to have a public meeting next week at the landing, which is an official public meeting, and then hopefully from there, you know, we'll get some input, and then we're just going to move forward with the process of the project. So, the overview is, the city received a CFA grant in 2019 for the creation of a dock gangway in Plaza with Path. So, it says, the idea was to create an access point to the river. I don't know if many people realize it, but even though we are a riverfront community, we do not have any docks or points of access to the river, other than the parks. So, it's kind of unique when you go to other riverside communities that usually have docks, and we do not. There was a talk several years ago about putting a dock in Riverside Park, but it ended up being controversial, people didn't want the idea of a dock down there. So, this is a dock with an uphill plaza, and I will get into the location in a little bit. Right here, you'll see the location, is we have an arena, we have a future hotel to improve, parking lot will be here, parking lot arena, and then that is our plaza, and those are our docks, and that is the RPI Research Facility. So, as I'll get into it a little bit, there's a reason for all the delay. Project 2016, we put in some access. 2020, we got the grants with a Schenectady match of 15%. That's typical on these kind of projects, you know, 855s. The city released a design RPI in 2021 after COVID, working with MJ and what's called Waterfront Solutions. So, MJ is essentially handling all the civil work, and then Waterfront Solutions is handling the dock work. They're a dock company, they also did the harbor for Glassy Group. Did a bathymetric survey, that is a survey of the riverbed in 2022, the project was paused, and that was, we rushed, we got to a point, and then it was Aquatic Center, and I was like, okay, where's the Aquatic Center going to go? And it was, never mind not at Aquatic Center, Arena. It's like, okay, where's the Arena going to go? So, we actually had a spot picked out in, in south there, and I can show you where. We actually, we're going to put the docks here, and we had a plan laid out, and then the arena came forward, and it was wait, and so we didn't want to move it anymore. So, we waited until plan approval and everything was set with the arena, and then we found a nice little spot in the middle. The nice thing about this location is that we are by a turnaround, we're by parking, the Glassy Group has said that that would be public parking, they will allow people during the day to park there, you know, not, event notwithstanding, but, you know, there probably won't be a event 24/7, and we are directly adjacent to the Alcoa Parage Trail. So, this will both be a overlook on the trail and the landing, and we'll have parking and a drop-off. You know, to be honest, this has to be publicly accessible, we'll probably get into that, but people who know the area, I do not see this going to be a full-access dock for recreational purposes, the reason being is that the gangway, the gangway is going to be quite long to get down from the shore to the water, and across the street by the White House, if you're familiar with the area, it's the easiest launch in the area. There's nothing easier than that, you park, you launch, it's 10 feet, you don't go down the gangway. So, I think that for people wanting to see the river, be involved, and be by the water, fishing and all that, but I really don't think that people will kayak and hike their kayaks down and things like that, unless it's for the novelty of it, because it is, it is a slope. So, the project, the one stage that we set is the plaza, which we're calling the Plaza with the Landing. It's small, 5,000 square foot, and we'll have lights, we'll have signs, benches, we are looking at very attractive welcome to Schenectady, because you have to understand that this is going to be. because you have to understand that this is going to be now a new entranceway for the city. This is going to be a gateway. We are looking at, you know, people who are called loopers, who come from all around the country. This is going to be allowing them to stop and go to Schenectady. So we really want to make sure that we have a nice anchored site here that shows you where they are. Also, we are talking with a riverfront cruise company that does small riverfront cruises of 40 people on boats, you know, we're limited by the locks. So they will come in. So this, this is something that's important. We're trying to make sure that we're working. And we're also incorporating this into our DRI wayfinding, because that also is going to connect to downtown. So there's a lot of irons in the fire with this. This will have water, this will have sanitary. We are not getting into fuel. Fueling is a whole other animal. We're going to allow the yacht club and places like that to handle fuel. Parking, we'll say, will be at the rear. If there's a better idea, you see the passenger drop-off, the trail, and then the area itself. We are gonna have electricity. We're gonna need a large transformer. We'll try to landscape that as pretty as possible. These are some of the things that we were looking at, just to say, benches. And we are actually moving away from the arch, but they took a picture of it. We are moving away from the arch style. One of the things to point out is, this one right here, I've been to marinas before with my family, and that is something that we are gonna have to talk about and discuss going forward, is what is public access, what is not public access? I'm proposing that the docks are publicly available from a time to a time, and that it is posted, and that after a certain time, it could be sundown. Most likely, the gate is locked, and if you have a boat there, you're, have a code. Because one of the things you're gonna see is, if you actually look at the river, sometimes you will see million-dollar boats, multimillion-dollar boats. And we want to make it a safe environment that somebody feels. And the boating community is a very tight community, especially within our social media forums. We really are looking for, it's open, it's signed, it's a public amenity in sunlight, um dum down. And then at nighttime, you know, well, we're gonna close it off. We don't want people, you know, down on the docks. It is a little tough to see. We are going to have cameras and security. We're all working on getting a dock management company. But I just don't want you to think, that is something that we're looking at is, and it's very common at commercial marinas with this type of boat. So the project is six, two projects, it's two contracts. That's what we're saying, it's dock, and it's a plaza. So they're awarded differently, they'll have to progress differently. So we've already talked with the permitting. We've got a lot of the permitting done. This is the seeker portion. We're now going to reach out to all the involved agencies and talk to them about making sure that they're okay with it. We have stamp plans. Right now, we're just going through all of the finals on it with the dock company. And then we'll be done with seeker, and then hopefully we issue a declaration later this year. And then we're out to bid, like it says, in August. We're looking to August. We're gonna have a lot of manufacturing time, because these are custom, very large docks. And then it shows dock delivery and dock construction of next year. We are, one of the things just to also point out, we are struggling right now with schedule, and when docks go in and when they wouldn't go in. We are looking at, if we can get docks in, in this June-July timeframe, it might make it worth it to put them in next year. The arena will be substantially complete. We're gonna be working inside. But we do not want to put docks in towards the end of the season, because it's a lot of work to put them in. You're using them for three weeks, then we close. So the timing of it is fluid, and we're really gonna get it in. The plaza is similarly, plaza, a lot of this is gonna be driven by the arena, which is adjacent, because we don't want to build a plaza and have a construction site around it. We'd like to, and the hotel hasn't even started yet. So we have bi-weekly coordination meetings with Gillesse and the hotel, and these are the things that we're tracking. So right now, it's a similar path, but this doesn't have as long as the lead time is constructing of a dock. And then I guess in conclusion, I guess, is, just want to get out there that we're gonna have a public meeting Wednesday the 26th, 4:30 at the Landing Hotel. We chose the Landing Hotel because we're looking for a place on-site somewhere. We're trying to get people involved. The problem with a project like this is it's essentially for transmitting people. You know, the people that will be using the facility the most are not residents. Residents will use it for fishing and things like that, but we do want to hear from people. So we're looking at having a public meeting 4:30 at the Landing. And then, like I said, I think it's a great project. It has a lot of fingers and everything else, and we're looking forward to getting people's comments. The other thing is, it is expandable. 360 feet is what we can afford today. If we find that the amenity is used, utilized, we'll have to look at expanding the dock. You can expand it to the north of the river. So, questions?
I think it's a terrific project to me. I think it's something that we've been waiting for, you know, in terms of the initial design of the entire Mohawk Harbor, and I'm excited, I'm very excited about it. So looking forward to seeing its completion. And there might be people in the apartments down there that might want some of the dock space.
Yes.
That are residents in other words.
Yep. And so we were gonna have the meeting in the Harbor House, but we thought if we had it there, it'd be too convenient, and we would overwhelm their community room. So our partner, our friends at Gillesse and Metroplex were arranging the hotel, which has a larger space for us to be able to use. And this is really gonna be a partnership project, unique to what we've ever done, because the city will be the owner of the docks, but we already have a memorandum of understanding with the Gillesse Group to help, you know, operate the docks. We're gonna have to store the docks. These docks cannot be out in the wintertime. They'll be floated and stored within the harbor, we're believing. You know, we have the DRI that we're working on. Like I said, Danielle's here for, you know, show the support of Metroplex with these projects. And we really think that it could be a great way to just promote the city to the waterfront community, because we're just very uniquely, we're uniquely positioned on both the river and the bike path. And this is the river and the bike path together. So.
Are you anticipating any concerns from the public?
I am not. I really don't have a, because the way everything came together, the original plan, like I showed you, where we were a little more, the parking was a little farther away, the path was a little longer, things were a little bit. But with the new spot where we are, with the drop-off and the parking, and the way it kind of integrates into the site, I really think it's a win. I really like it. And I don't see what people would, I haven't figured out what people would push back on then, other than they don't want big boats. But you know, they're not, they're not too noisy, and they're in the river. So, and this is a commercial area. There's not, you know, that's not a condominium. It's not an apartment building, it's a hotel. So I think, I think it will be positive.
Well, thank you. Any other to my question? Or is that all that we said?
Yeah, so this is just for right now, for seeker purposes, you know, for sending out the letters and all that. We'd like the city to declare lead agency on this project. And then we're gonna move forward with our determination and reaching out to all the interested parties. So I just wanted to kind of loop you guys and give you the information before.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Up and say a motion.
So move.
Second.
Al's a favor.
Hi.
Mr. Williams. Item number five, vape and smoke shop zoning ordinance, Ms. Karash.
It's okay, Ms. Matt and President, I'll take this. In your package this past week, you've got a revised ordinance. The comments came back pursuant to the general permissible law from the county planning commission with their comments, and they were, which are highlighted in the package I gave you in red. And that, they just had a couple of questions, really minor revisions to the overall text of the proposed ordinance. The minor edits and comments in the proposed ordinance were attached. The reds were the items that were deleted. The yellow items are the ones that were based suggestive language. They had a couple of questions in the definition section. What was added, what was included in there is some medical marijuana and another marijuana definition. They said, it's not in the rest of the code. The reason those were put in there, in case you ever want to build off of this particular section of the code regarding cannabis operations. So those definitions are already in there. And that's, it's not referenced in there, but in case you ever want to build off it, definitions are already included. And then the last part of this, the last page, dealing with the amortization oversight on my part, that language came from our city zoning code dealing with adult establishments. That reference wasn't deleted. It should have been, or was deleted. Regarding the issue of amortization, I know there was some discussion on this, on this the last time. What it means is that if you adopt this ordinance, yet the vape shops that are in those areas that you've declared them not to be legal would have one year to wrap up their business. Now, if they wish to extend past that one year, then they would have to go to the zoning board of appeals to prevent financial information as to why this would be a hardship, and they can't abide by that one-year deadline. So there's an appeal process through the zoning board of appeals. That language is from, as I indicated, from our zoning code dealing with adult businesses. So that same type of appeal process is already in our code. It's just placed into this section regarding vapes, shops, smoke shops, et cetera. And the alternative, if you just wanted to not get into that and just have these establishments stay past that one year, then they become a legal non-conforming use. What does that mean? They can stay as long as they're continuing an operation as a vape shop, but if they vacated it, then whoever came in would not, it's not zoned for that particular use. So if you want, you know, it can be, the language there can be changed, in which it will become a legal non-conforming use for after one year. Or on the alternative, you know, keep that language regarding amortization in there for, for. So it's really up to you, but it's your option. I know there was concern, discussion last time, so I just wanted to flesh that out a little bit.
So I do have a concern about, you know, after a year, saying you have to prove that you're financially, that you need to stay here. So I essentially think that's, that's an opportunity for us to put people out of business where they currently are, if they're there legally. So I have a concern about that, and I think that just to have them stay with the, then allowing them to be there and not have to come before the zoning board every year is the way that I would prefer, that we approach this particular situation with these establishments. But obviously, input from the other council members.
I mean, the language we could use, I mean, if we wanted, if you wanted to go down that route and delete that portion, it would be that all such facilities or establishments lawfully and actually operating open to the public on the date of the adoption of this particular, or shall be permitted to continue as a legal non-conforming use, and all others will be declared unlawful, prohibited. And our zoning law deals with non-conforming uses, and what if they're discontinued? It would, if there's a discontinuance, if it's not continuously operating, then it would revert to, it would be a non-conforming use, a new outfit.
Understood. Mr. Williams?
So to that point, is the non-conforming use extended to the business, or is the business owner, you know, give the business?
No, it's the business, vape shops.
Are meant to, to like a singular business?
It's the type of business that's gone in there. It's, it's the type of business. And in the definition, the definition section covers all that. So I know it's, it would be the type of business, so it's.
Thank you.
So just as to keep the current language that we have. We're not putting them out of business, it's just they would have to move after a year into the approved area that is zoned for this. So I think there is opportunity for them to kind of like work until they are ready to move into the approved area. That is zoned for vape and smoke shops.
So I think what comes into play here is how many vape shops are there? How much room is there in these, in these approved areas? Because we have, there's a distance, right? They have to stay apart. So if we're limiting the area, and within that area, we're limiting the proximity, that could impact businesses if there's enough businesses, like, and then we run out of space. What happens to those individuals? So those, you know, are also part of my concerns, because if we do that, then essentially, somebody would have, may have to go out of business. So.
They're allowed to for a year extension?
They would be allowed to operate from one year from the, from the, when you adopt this ordinance, let's say, July 15th or whatever. One year, they can continue. After that one year, if they wish to remain in business, a form would need to be developed for, they need to go before the zoning board of appeals for them to demonstrate financial hardship as to why they should be allowed to operate for a period of time after the end of the, after the, after that one-year period.
In their current position.
In their current position.
Well, last count, there were 39 smoke shops in the city. Plus, we know that more have developed and popped up and don't have proper, you know, aren't properly documented on the books, even operate. So I noticed one the other day, but the windows were all sealed up, and it's got a big sign in the window, ATM, but it's the dragons, or it's a smoke shop. But anyway. So I'm in agreeance with leaving it that, you know, they'd have to come before the board of appeals to keep their position if they can prove it's a hardship. But other than that, as far as, we don't need six in one block. So I do like, you know, how things are going to be stated in the moratorium. I'm sorry, I'm all for small business, I'm a small business, but, you know, we have, we have a lot of youth out there that are walking by these smoke shops, and I'm just not in favor of them. There's more than enough places that they'll be able to establish their business.
I don't know if there's more than enough places. I don't know, have we, if we've done, what the, if we moved all 39 to this, to what's, to what's, would be available, to what we're zoning it for, I don't know that there's enough places. So I, I do have that concern about someone not being able to, I don't, not being able to continue with their business. Whether it's a business that I approve or not, that's not really why I'm here. It's, if it's a legal business, and they're, you know, it's something that they can legally do, then I don't, I don't agree that we, I think that we should just go with legal and non-conforming. That's, that's how I see this. Mr. Williams?
The last time we discussed, as we were talking about the 40% allowed for the agents.
Yeah, there was no agents. Yes, there was no comment from the county planning on that amount. And that 40%, that 40% is still in there.
Right. Because they have not met yet?
That's the city plan.
That's the city plan, they were not able to take that, take that up. And I think Mr. Ryan said, if they, because they didn't have anything official, and I asked for something official, and I didn't have anything. So they're all taking it up till the next meeting. And if they do, then it's certainly something that we could amend. They came up with a specific percentage and a reason why they came up with that specific percentage.
They could come up with a percentage, they could bring it before you as a, as a transmittal and saying that their number is whatever, and then you would have the opportunity to amend the ordinance if you so desire at that point.
Yes. I think President Porterfield and I, we agreed on the fact that, you know, whatever they want to put in their shop, or, you know, the 40% was, you know, we didn't have an issue with. With them, you know, keeping that at 40%, you know, they have a shop, they can sell everything legally in there, whatever they want. And whoever's going into the shop is going in there for a specific reason anyway, for products. So I don't think there was an issue with the percentage of the space inside the building, what they could sell.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
They were suggesting, the members from the zoning board, planning commission, 25%.
They didn't get a percentage?
No, they never gave a number. There are other localities that gone down to 20, 20, 25%. That was just as a, as a reference point, but I don't think, we did not get a hard number from the city planning commission.
So currently, it's 40%?
It's 40% in the draft.
Other display area?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
So I think I'm just being transparent with my thoughts, except everyone else has been. I find myself citing more than Mr. Toro and I understand that there are going to be consequences of our actions where 39 is a rather large number. I think my only hesitation with the nonconformances, and then correct me if I'm wrong, it would only apply to individuals that were in that quote-unquote good standing. So if you had individuals that weren't putting in place the proper marketing or square footage like I would?
No, there would be, anybody could put in, put in a request to the zoning Board of Appeals because it's looking at dollars and cents proof as to whether or not they're, they've put in a substantial financial expenditure related to the nonconformity and that the closing down would have, would have a financial impact upon that.
So it's a continuation, you essentially have businesses continuing on without making any adjustments?
I don't understand the question.
Well, we're highlighting wanting to adjust the behavior. So I applied for a nonconformance to not have to like alter like where my business is?
No, what you're saying to the zoning Board of Appeals, I'm at this street. The deadline has come down. I have, I've invested X amount of dollars into this. Therefore, I feel that I should expend more, I should, the deadline should not apply to me and that way I should stay longer.
Because it's impacting me financially. Mr. Williams, did you have?
No, I was gonna add to that. So would you stay longer in terms of, is there time to reduce their expenditure?
It would be, it would really depend on a case-by-case basis of how much they put in, how long they've been there, dollars and cents proof provided to the zoning Board of Appeals.
So just like they can go on for another year?
It would all depend.
It depends, yeah.
It all depends. And it would be prior to the nonconformity, the nonconformity is when you're, in other words, those individuals that put into their, put the business in really, we've had the vape shop moratorium since March. It would be, you see that it would be a longer period of time. So a longer period of time, it would indicate that they would have more return on their investment because the nonconformity would occur July 15th. But presumably they'd worked and had their business there prior to when you, except it's, hadn't the moratorium put in place back in March.
To lead the businesses.
Right.
So that seems to be the only sticking point?
Are we moving?
Because I'm happy to move this.
Are we moving it tonight?
Yeah, yeah, we're ready to, we have.
I mean, as amended, it can go forward and I put the new language in, the red language deleted, the yellow.
Just so you know, so our, we're, I know they're not in color, so you don't know what language is being deleted, which language?
I read it, yeah, but I'm sorry.
I read it online.
It's bracketed as well.
I'm sorry.
So you're.
It's bracketed, it's highlighted, it may not be yellow, but it's highlighted.
Yeah, yes. Mr. Wood, there?
So I'm in favor of keeping the language that is pointed here. Let these businesses come back before the zoning board to kind of like discuss their financial, you know, add a plus or minus. Board would allow them to extend, give them an extension to continue the business until they can remove their expenditure. Because the sole purpose of us is to centralize these businesses in approved zoning area. So if we were to say we'll change it back, but it doesn't serve any purpose, so we're doing here.
I did agree the sole purpose was to centralize them in one area. That's, you know, we kind of tried to do that a while back with the, what was it? Adult shops and I, that turned out to be a problem. I don't know if you remember that, you probably don't know that would. So.
So we were also, if I remember correctly, one of the main reasons for this was to start to kind of take a look at businesses that are operating with not, they're not operating in compliance with what the cities rules and expectations are. And this moratorium was to kind of stop the, from popping up all over the place where we can manage what was in front of us, right?
And with that, so Mayor, in terms of the enforcement and for those that are legal versus illegal, do we have any type of update on the ones of the 39 is what Mr. Toro says, but I'm kind of thinking of.
Seen an updated list of the enforcement, we can put that together. We have two weeks to get it out to you by the end of the week, beginning of next week.
And the other thing for me, and I guess other access to do Mayor as well, if someone can map it out, if we have it mapped out where they currently exist as well.
We did, it's not updated.
Just updated, yeah, updated, but we did get the map.
Well, like you said, this, she said there's more popping up and just, yeah. The neighborhood said they're, so. Okay. So you're suggesting that we just move ahead with it as it currently is and let them come before the zoning board?
Yes, that is what I'm suggesting, that we move as is.
This language?
With the language that's pointed before us.
And Mr. O'Brien, when would they have to, when would this, from July 15th until July 15th, 2025?
Whenever it has to pass the council, so, and when the mayor signs it. And as the ordinance says, this ordinance shall take effect immediately. So upon the mayor's signature or 10 days, whatever that is pursuant to the code, that will be, the year will start at that point.
Okay. And if for some reason this obviously doesn't work out, we could always come back and add some language?
If you ever want to revisit it, like any ordinance, you can always bring this back. If it's not, not, if you want to revisit it at any time, you can put it back on. And if you want to amend it, it would be another public hearing or you just want to have a discussion on that, certainly it can always be revisited.
Okay. I'll turn, what's your?
Move.
And I'll second. So I will just make this statement that I will support this. However, if people come to us and say there's a hardship, then I would want this brought back before this council to be revisited. I don't want to put a hardship on any small businesses. So with that caveat, all in favor?
Madam President, that could always be the case if you want to revisit that language in the last portion of the ordinance and along the discussion items we've talked about earlier. And just one other item, it's a type-two seeker action.
Yes.
And I would just ask that that also, that resolution.
What, yes, it is, is it on there? Yeah.
There's a seeker resolution.
Yeah, they'll have the seeker on.
It's right here, right? Page 159. Page 159.
The seeker resolution declaring it as a type-two action. Page 159 in the packet.
Yeah.
So you need us to declare?
Yes, it's a.
I'm saying it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's what it said.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we, so the next item is to declare the adoption of the ordinance creating section 264-113 of the code. It's that subject environmental review of the State Quality Review Act. So do we need that resolution?
Move it.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. And just, Mr. O'Brien and I had this quick conversation when we were at the legislature conference about the incoming cannabis shops and that we should at some point maybe even talk about the, how that works in the zoning of that. As you can see, we have a new People's Joint on State Street. That's the name of it, I didn't make it up, John. So, and there's, I checked with the Office of Cannabis Management and there's at least three more that are pending and are prepared to come within the city. So I don't know that there's a limit on how many we can have. So it's a question. So just so you know, that's a question I'm going to be asking the Office of Cannabis Management. I couldn't find anywhere where there was a limit on how many applications. And currently, I can't remember the number that we have, but we have quite a few applications that have come through the clerk's office saying they want to be here and they've given the various addresses where they want to be. So I'll be following up on that and making the council aware.
Madam President, you want to discuss that next time in two weeks?
Okay.
That would be 131 of the cannabis law.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item is a discussion of rules of decorum during city council meetings. We came up with these rules a while ago and I'm not asking for anything to be, I'm not asking any rules to be changed or anything. But what I am, would like to see is, we put those out there, but nowhere does it state that once you sign up that you're willing to abide by those rules. So I just wanted to add that statement. So that there's some level of enforcement, if that's a term you want to use. So they're right there before you, they currently stand, but just adding number 17, it says by signing up to speak that you agree to adhere to the decorum of the council meetings. That's got it.
So maybe add that to the sign-up sheets?
Well, the sign-up sheets already have all these on here.
But that statement?
Yes, and just adding that to what's already there.
Right.
Yes. That's it for that, so.
So we need to move a motion to that?
I think we do.
So move.
I'm sorry.
But then should it include like specific language saying if you don't, like you're relinquishing your ability to use this platform? Is that what we're implying? Or is that?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Does it also need to include like specific language that states you're not adhering to this means that you're relinquishing your ability to speak at this platform?
Well, I think number 16 kind of covers that, that we'll remove. I think we'd have to look a little further into whether or not we could say that specifically. Mr. O'Brien?
Was there a question?
Well, it was regarding the acknowledgement, the acknowledgement or whether that it could be, whether you could force it to the point where people vacate their, or waive their ability to speak.
If we, if we said, okay, when you write, when you sign this, you acknowledge about these rules, what Mr. Williams was asking is if we could add something that says, and if you don't, then you relinquish your ability to be able to have privilege of the floor.
Ever?
I'm sorry.
Is that what you're?
Well, not forever, but I mean for the, for the best meeting. I mean, essentially if you have someone that disregards it, what happens? They just keep going.
Well, I think, I think.
Ms. Patrick?
I think Mr. Farley had his hand up first, so.
Yeah, no, I was just, just wanted to be really careful about like adding. I think that that's a fair suggestion to say like, you know, by signing this, you're acknowledging that you're expected to act within these stated parameters. I just, as far as like consequences, if you will, we have to just be mindful, you know, we don't want to discourage people to, you know, after every time people come up the street, we always thank them for their input. And I just want to make sure that we encourage more of that and just be mindful. That's all I guess I would say about balancing that with people's ability to come down and speak, I think is important, that's all.
Uncomfortable, I guess. Mr. Garsh?
I would request and recommend that we do some legal review of that prior to passing this forward.
Review that if they signed it, that then they're adhering to it?
Yeah, look into the legalities of that.
Okay. Could you let us know in two weeks?
Absolutely.
And I guess we need to further discuss if we want to even consider adding what Mr. Williams has suggested. Ms. Patrick?
I think that numbers, I agree with you that number 16 covers a consequence, but, so I think after Corporation Council has the opportunity to review, but I think that does sort of state consequences.
And I think, yeah, I agree. And I think that it's important that we, you know, let people know what the expectation is. But I am, as Mr. Farley, I'm kind of like, want to be careful of the over policing. Yes, Mr. Farley?
Because some, I mean, because some of the language, I mean, even though I think that we might have pretty clear, well, Lisa, we might be able to build consensus around what we think is vulgar or inflammatory, you know, I think that something that you do really well is if people seem to be crossing that line, you remind them. And I think that what usually happens from what I have, my experience with someone says something that might be closely, getting ready to cross that line, you address them and then they are more mindful in their words. And I think that that's important because I think they won't put something on paper saying, if you do this, then this is the consequence. Or maybe to some people, some of the things that they might be saying might not be inflammatory and/or threatening, right? We might perceive them differently. So I like that, at least that kind of guardrail of you just saying, hey, that's, you know, you're getting close to this thing. So I just think that that's important too. And I think that that might have to be in some language as well because that is really, that might just be something that you do as, you know, as a matter of practice and not necessarily a matter of policy. So I know we're talking about policy here.
Well, again, I think that it looks like five of us agreed to this. Not saying that we wouldn't ever change our minds, but we did vote for this. And, you know, it's, it's pretty clear in terms of the language that's here. And I agree that I think the council president, as you did last week, for example, you opened the meeting really kind of reminding people about the public comment period. And then did, you know, kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Marshall the discussion. So I think that, that's, I think what you're saying as well, that, you know, we do have that ability for the council president to make an announcement and then, you know, has the timer and has the ability to, I think you've, you know, many times have said, direct your comments here, you have different statements or the council president has different statements that does sort of keep the conversation going within, you know, appropriateness, appropriate guidelines.
So I'm, I'm just saying that while, once we make sure that it's legally okay to do. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Madam President, just a question. Whether, you know, they would be free to sign it or not sign it? In other words, then would that impact on being called or not?
Yes, no name, no, I can't call you.
So that would go for their signing?
Yeah, once you sign it, that's how we know to call a person up to speak. And it also clearly states that once the meeting's begun, you cannot then be, you know, be signed up to speak. So your signature is what gets you, gets your name called, that's how we.
But we don't have, right now have them signing this type of document? No, it's just the sign-in sheet?
The sign-in sheet has this on it.
Okay, but it's not an acknowledgement, you're looking for wording where it says, this acknowledges you've read the above and.
It's part of this, yes. It's part of, but we already have just the last thing to say and signing that you agree to these rules. And of course, as we do with any changes, we'll just make sure that's clear to the public when they come.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll put the, bring this back, well, you'll let us know in two weeks whether it is or not, we'll have the information.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And the next item is just a reminder regarding the amendments of the zoning ordinance relating to the Hamilton Redevelopment Planning, Reinvestment Plan, also referred to as Schenectady 40. And the public hearing is going to be on the 24th of June. And the public hearing is going to be on the 24th of June. So that's just a reminder. The remainder of the items will have to be done in executive session. So I've asked for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Members of the public will have to leave.